Recording in line.
Great. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, and I want to welcome everyone to the EBR Report Zoning Board of Appeals for our hearing this evening, ten twenty-four, two thousand and twenty-three. It's now seven oh-two, our appointed time. So I want to introduce myself. My name is Rob Champetti. I have the privilege of serving as Chair of the ZBAA. And I'll introduce members of the board. And what I'd like to do is go through before our roll call, establish who are, who is here, whether we have a quorum, and then establish our five legal voting members. And what we'll do is get right into our business meeting. We'll follow the framework of our agenda. All of this material is both available as people take reference to it for our online community. We still make available our live meetings via hybrid. Everything will be put up on the board behind you. Anyone that is logged on via Zoom will be able to hear and experience any slides that are being referenced. So without further ado, I'll just take a moment and introduce everyone at the tables. We'll go into a quick overview and then jump right into the business of the meeting. So I'm the, take a quick moment and introduce members of the board. We have to my immediate left, Mr. Ken Swanton, our Vice Chair, Mr. Gregory Bennett, a member. We have Mr. Walter Jenner, a member, and Ms. Patricia Pecknick, Associate Member. We have two members that are absent this evening. And again, my name is Rob Champetti as ZBAA Chair. So because we have five members, the five voting members for all applications this evening will be myself, Mr. Swanton, Mr. Bennett, Mr. Shannon, and Ms. Pecknick. And I will now just go through the quick sort of ceremonial exercise of calling the role, establishing that we have a legal quorum, and off we'll go. So just calling the role of the Newbury Port Zoning Board of Appeals. Members of the ZBAA just kindly respond with either here or present. Mr. Swanton, here. Mr. Bennett, here. Mr. Shannon, here. Ms. Pecknick, here. Rob Champetti, I'm here. That's five present. We have a quorum. So just give everyone a quick overview of the flow of this evening for anyone that might not be familiar with how we conduct our business at the zoning board of appeals. We begin every application following the meeting agenda that's online and available. We start with our roll call, which we've just done, established that we have a legal basis to take on the business of the zoning board this evening, which we do. And then we get into the business meeting. In our instance, we have one matter in our business meeting, which is a request for a minor modification on twenty-two Market Street. We then get into our public hearings, of which we have three in the sequence, fourteen Peyton Street, sixteen Oakland Street, and forty-nine Phillips Drive. The way the ZBAA flow works typically, and if you've seen it before, either online or live, we will begin every application by reading the legal notice or the legal application. That's essentially myself just reading the application and describing it by applicant name, address, and usually a quick descriptor of what the applicant seeks relief for. Whether the applicant seeking a special permit, special permit for non-conformities, or a variance, or in combination of those three, and then a very brief sort of natural language description of exactly what they look to do. If the applicant seeking to restore and rebuild and reconstruct, you know, an exterior porch, or add a room, or whatever the description is, so that one need, God forbid, be have to be a lawyer and another voter to understand what is before the ZBAA and what the application is about. Once I've read the legal description, we will invite the applicant or the applicant representative to come up and take the podium. We have these owl cameras that are camera microphone combinations. They're picking up everything that everyone says and sort of zooming in on wherever the the sound is coming from. So those at home can follow along and they'll be able to see whoever's speaking. So that's why we ask them to kindly take the podium. We'll ask the applicant or the applicant's counsel or architect or whomever represents them to present the application, at which point we close that portion, the first portion of the public hearing. We go into the second phase of our public hearings, which is public comment. Public comment is when we invite anyone in the audience, as well as folks online, to just simply raise your hand, be recognized, and kindly give to Ms. Gretchen Joy, who's at the very right most of this table, our Keeper of the Minutes, your name and address. And then just speak your mind. You needn't necessarily say you're for or against, though you're welcome to. You needn't be in a pro or con column, though you're welcome to identify yourself that way. You can simply just share your thoughts and we will be hearing from you. We do ask that everyone kindly govern yourselves, keeping comments to within two minutes. I have the discretion to just, I'll gently ask someone to kindly wrap things up as courteously as possible, but we rarely run into that. We just ask everyone to kindly just sort of govern yourselves as you offer those comments. Once we've gone through everyone in the audience, I then will open it up to hands remotely. So anyone virtually will raise their hand and we'll do the same thing, unmute their mic and we'll hear from them. Keep in mind, if you have a comment that is in the frame of a question, this often happens. Please understand we mean you no discourtesy if we don't respond directly to your question, even if your comment is posed in the form of a question to members of the board. Know that it's not our, we don't entertain questions, but you will surely hear some form of your question in the next phase of our hearing, which is questions before. This is where members of the ZBAA will, will ask questions of the applicant or the applicant representatives. And surely any question from the public comment section that was framed in the form of a question that didn't get answered, you will hear very assuredly something that you'll recognize as either your exact question or something close to it from one of the members of the board. But just understand that if you don't hear us respond to your question, know that we're not ignoring it. We're just, this is the sort of the procedural method. After we close the third section of the public hearings, which is the questions from the board, we go into the fourth and final segment, which are the deliberations. Deliberations is when you get to hear members of the ZBAA just toil with the legal criteria of each application as we're taking on the facts and trying to run that through the lens of whether the applicant met the burden, whether we had additional questions. You'll hear us think out loud. That's part of the public hearing, uh, uh, public meeting rules. We can't have any secret conversations. So we, we debate and discuss this by between each other and ourselves, at which point the mic lists and follow-on questions, and if there are, we'll ask. When we go through deliberations, we will then close, and I will then ask for members of the ZBAA to advance the number of motions to approve. Just use that language, motion to approve, because, so know that that doesn't mean that the, any member of the ZBAA that makes a motion to approve intends to support it or support that application. It's just simply the procedural format to advance that application to the final stage, which is a vote from the members of the ZBAA. Once a motion's made to approve the application, if that motion is seconded, we will then call, I will then call the roll, and every member will vote yes or no. In order to be successful, the application must have four votes in the affirmative, which means that four of the five folks sitting here, myself included, have to vote yes in order for the application to pass. That's in a nutshell, you know, zoning one-on-one. There will be no quiz on that. So just, I'd like to go over that just so that folks have an understanding of what to expect. And without further ado, we will go right into our first matter. I'll just take a quick note and, and I introduce the statement. Sullivan is our City Planner and, and Mr. Andy Fort, who is our Planning Director. Right, but of course Gretchen Joy to the far right is our Keeper of the Minutes, writing down everything that he's saying. God help. Right? So with that, we have, you know, just this meeting, a request for a minor modification. This is the matter of twenty-two Market Street. It is a, uh, uh, special permit for non-conformities and a special permit. And we have voted on this once before. Wait, we hear from the applicant attorney to shake.
Hey, I'm attorney with Bennett and Nicholson here in Newbury Port. I represent Down East Residential LLC. Along as the project, I'll with me this evening, Ben and Gary from Down East Residential LLC. And our record our engineer is Everett Chandler from Wither GEC LLC. I just wanted to start by reminding you what the pre-develop or pre-redevelopment inn looked like. And this is a picture of the original inn as Brian's Mark permitting. So like the follow-up would like. Okay, let me go to the next slide, please. And then this is just the second photo from the front. You recall that at the time that those buildings were attached and have subsequently been separated and redeveloped as separate projects. So that's likely. So just to keep a quick outline, we are here this evening seeking approval of a minor modification to allow for the replacement of the existing windows with reproduction wood. Windows, you recall that in the original approval, we had proposed to actually have the windows that are there reconstructed and reinstall. However, for a couple of reasons, which we're going to discuss, we have run into some fire code and safety concerns. And so as part of the seeking of the minor modification, my clients are also proposing to add a seated shape roof to the building, which will be keeping with its original design. The reason for this is because we can't build the windows that are there. Wanted to do whatever we could to help to maintain the historic integrity of the building. Also, as suggested by our planning staff, I want to give you a very quick overview of the minor changes that we've made or propose to make to the project, which have been administratively reviewed and approved, will prove as administrative. But there are minor little things that I think the board might want to hear. So I know you have a busy agenda, so I'm going to run through these very quickly. Obviously, if you have any questions, you can ask at any time. So what I, what I'd like to do is just show you the elevations, because I think the elevations reflect all of these minor modifications. I think these term minor modification, these administrative changes that we're proposing. So as you can see on the left-hand side here, this was the previously approved rear elevation, and we have proposed the following changes. One, you can see that we eliminated most of that rear deck and instead are now proposing a single stairway from the second floor. We no longer need access from two spots on the second floor, so we thought we could get rid of some of the decking and just come back with a simple stairway from one exit. I know the neighbors who we're meeting with later this week talk about the project and, and explain these changes to them. I know they will be very happy with this change. They were concerned about people hanging out on the deck at night and making noise. So we've eliminated the debt. You can see that the windows on the right-hand side of the building have now been shifted. We now have double windows in their place. We've added one small window to the far left side of, of the building. You can see it over to the left, that small window, just to get a little more light to that room. And the biggest, the only other change here is you can see that our addition on the left was originally approved to be sort of parallel, you know, to, to parallel with the existing roof line there. You can see the peak of the addition is slightly offset to the right. Well, as it turns out, there was an error in our pre, our existing conditions plan. And that, that, that back portion of the building isn't actually symmetrical. Does it, you know, the roof wasn't like this. And in fact, the dotted line on the left shows you what the actual original roof line looked like. You can see if we would just line up the, the proposed addition with that new peak, it would have been over, and we don't want to be changing roof line. So go to the next slide, and if you look to the right, you can see what we're proposing to do now is just align the addition and peak with the peak of the existing roof. So that we're not increasing any heights, we're not doing anything to affect the height, but rather it's to make the building look correct. Right now, the peaks will line up and the ridges will be parallel, the right side will, the, the, parallel the existing roof, and then the left side will come down at a slightly sharper angle. So that was just to address a, again, that pre-existing roof line was incorrectly shown, but we can fix it without affecting roof height or anything. So we will be keeping with our original permit. Go to the next slide, please. So this is our approved left side. And you can see that the modified left side to the right of the slide, we've eliminated all of the deck, just showing that single stairway coming down. The only other change here is, as you can see, the roof line of the addition, where it was staggered before on the left picture, is now in parallel with the existing roof line. And lastly, we propose to put shuttered windows on the left-hand side of this elevation to the same location. It's just that, as it turns out, the folks next door, their dumpsters, garbage storage area is right below those windows. So we thought it would be better to shutter, shutter those windows. And of course, the shutters are the same shutters that are being put on the rest of the building. Didn't want to let you know that we're going to shutter those windows so that our guests don't look out onto their base disposal area. And then I guess the last slide in this, in this group is to show you the front elevation. There really are no changes to the front elevation, except that, again, we're going to be talking totally about using reproduction wood windows. And it's hard to see in this plan, but we did show that we are proposing to do a seated shape roof. Now, which will enhance that front view. And then as far as the left, again, there's really no major changes, other than the fact you can see the stairway now is a single stairway. The roof of the addition is now aligned with the peak of the existing roof and reconducted windows seated shape. So those are, again, the, the minor modifications. We work with your zoning enforcement officer, as well as your planner, to make sure other deeds were approved. They could therefore be considered a great improvement. Still a lot of days. The project has, has suffered a few stops and starts due to, as always, with demolishing, demolishing, taking a building apart for renovation, to write some unknown things. We have problems with foundations, things. But we are back on track and hoping, hoping to get this thing wrapped up. So if I'm going to the next slide, please, this is really, oh, I'm sorry. I just, I just took the site plan as approved. And I, I, I sketched in the new stairway in the back, the seated blue, and I provided you some copies of that plan if you can't see it well enough. But I just wanted to show you that the new stairway, which comes straight down, will be located as shown on the plan, and all of the decking there that was previously approved will no longer be at it. So I think that was a good improvement and one, as I said, the neighbors were, I'm sure, very supportive of getting rid of those decks. So. Okay, if you could jump to the next slide, please. And, and again, this is, ladies and gentlemen, you know, the reason we're here tonight is to seek a minor modification. And specifically, what we would like to do is allow the existing windows, which were previously proposed to be reconstructed, to instead be replaced by very high-quality reproduction wood windows. That will look identical to the windows that are there, although they will be new block windows. So you know, we actually have a sample of the window. And again, the basis for, for request is twofold. One, energy conservation considerations. Now, I will admit that historic buildings do, do have exemption from meeting the current energy codes and, you know, meeting earth ratings and, and, you know, anything else that a new building would be required to meet. Do have an exemption from that. But that doesn't mean we still have to face the issue of trying to keep this building with the single pane, you know, all the wood windows in place. And as you might recall, or I'm sure you've seen throughout the city, this building and others that have the older windows, original windows or older reproductions, end up putting stone windows on the, on the building. There are stone windows, there were stone windows on this building originally. And, you know, to me, to me, you know, my clients are concerned that, you know, if they do the older windows, which are planned and many others, you know, it's just going to be a nightmare trying to keep this place long without putting. Putting all your energy and effort, providing these, the windows are replacing them. But you're putting, you're putting all that money restoring the windows. It would be a shame to have to put stone windows. That's just a consideration. Again, do have an exemption from the, the energy code, but that doesn't mean, it wouldn't still be incredibly expensive and inefficient to keep this place. The biggest bases or the strongest bases for our request, safety considerations, which in just a moment, I'll let Mr. Legary walk you through the, the safety concern that they ran into in, in doing these windows. And again, as I mentioned, my client was very forthcoming when we originally came in, working with the historic commission and the trust, and tried to provide all of the requirements and requests that they asked for. And one of them was, you know, would you consider rebuilding these windows rather than replacing them? And we did say yes. He had every intention of doing that until we ran into this problem. However, because we are now in a way sort of stepping back a little from the historic preservation aspect of the building, he has proposed, my clients have proposed, that they would be willing to reconstruct the roof now with a seated shape, so I understand it was, this building, the original, had that in its day. So while we might be taking, finding a little step back with historic preservation, because we're offering a good step forward, really preserving the building. So we would hope that the board will allow us to take a lot of replacement. That, I'd like to let Mr. Gary just walk you through safety concerns, and I know he has an example of the reproduction windows that they're proposing to you.
Thanks for having me tonight. Go to the next slide, too. Okay, yeah, I can go to the next. This kind of all started, you know, I guess, I haven't had a ton of experience actually saving windows. You know, last time was not, apparently I've learned some lessons from periods of houses and stuff. But as we got into the project and we started talking to people about reconstructing the windows and getting them repaired, you know, I went in and kind of testing the operability of them, kind of how bad they are and kind of started lifting them. And the first time I went in, I lifted it up and it immediately slammed shut and one of the painted glass cracked, and it was pretty, pretty abrasive, pretty hard. The first thing that came to mind was that is completely unsafe. I mean, I have five and seven-year-old kids. Windows are always a big concern for me. You know, I even put impact windows because that was a little crazy, the fall protection on my house. So, you know, the first thing I was thinking is just, you know, A, our kids and, you know, elderly people with facilities, are they going to be able to use light windows? And this is, in an emergency, are they going to know and be able to hold this window up with one arm and stick their head up, the other, with the other, with their head? And then second, this simple problem, problem would happen is a child. So after witnessing this, I kind of had a conversation with a couple of different people, found out that the reason this is is because they're first period windows. Back then, they never had the pouring systems. The last windows that I did, they have the pouring system. So shame on me. I expected them to be similar. This is a lesson in, in that type of period of architecture, even though I went to architectural history classes in college, I, I still didn't get that. So the way to stay open is there's a little clip that I like. I recall a friend of mine, Mick Crackdown, you know, saying, how do you stay open? Has this worked? He explained it and directed me to that little clip where you open it all the way out and clip it up in, and it kind of holds the window open. Admittedly, I didn't know that, and the first thing that I thought of is there is no chance my kids or, you know, many of the people that stay in this hotel are going to know that. So that could be to look into, you know, are these even allowed by code? And, you know, how does that look in, in code wise, you know, because it's a public building, you're having transient gifts that are staying at your facility. I already know that commercial buildings have a massively increased safety risk with sprinklers and tags and signs and e-res, all that stuff. So it kind of brought me to the zone and did bring me to a section that, that found out why I believe that they do not need them. And I think, you know, after many talks with, you know, some professionals, we have come to the conclusion that something does have to happen. The way they sit, if they are restored as they sit, they do not need them. And the, the reason why is the capacity building code R three-ten, one point, point one, point one is operational constraints and control devices. It says, emergency escape and rescue opening shall be operated from the inside of the room without use tools or special knowledge. So special knowledge is repeated in the three-ten, two-point-one minimum opening area, where it says the net clear opening dimensions required by this section shall be obtained by normal operation of the emergency escape and rescue opening from the inside. Now, after many discussions, we kind of worked out like, is this normal operation? Does this take special knowledge? You know, a child cannot know to operate this window. I think, you know, what we've come up with, I think with all city officials, is the situation we have right now is if they restore the way they are in this very, very unique situation. And I have to repeat, this is not something you may never see that, because in a residential home, I don't think this applies. Because that residential homeowner knows how to operate their own windows, so it will not take special knowledge to operate windows currently on them. And then even in the commercial code, there's exemptions for museums, for office buildings, for all sorts of commercial uses, except for students. It breaks down that, you know, they assume that some people are hard sleepers, some people have schizophrenia, some people don't wake up well, and in the middle of the night, it's a lot more dangerous of a situation to find yourself out of an escape room than if you're in an office building wide awake, you're going to have a lot more time to react. So I guess right now, we said, after discussions with all the officials, that, you know, something happened to them. And the two options that we are right now is you go with the building, one window on every building, and it's in every room. So every room, we say, in the building, one of the windows. You know, and I think it's the FIA, FIA or AAM, A certification now, which is, which is the certification testing that requires for construction windows. And then we have options, you know, because they, they are unsafe to lift, we would have to screw fifty percent of the windows in the building shut permanently. Or we would follow the directions of chapter twelve, the store buildings, that dictates directions of how to replace. So those are two options. We basically go over five rooms and replace, they know, others, or, you know, we would replace them at the same time. And that drop, we're going to check and follow with this. This is the section that homeowners, if homeowners that want to take the risk and know, but, you know, they know their windows, it's their risk to pay, it's their energy to lose. There, this is the section that gives them the exception to not need building. So if you go to that section, which, again, those apply for partial, because I can't take that risk for others. So if I have a family state marriage, probably, I'd like to say, I feel comfortable with your safety. It's meant for homeowners that says, I feel comfortable with that, I'm okay, and it allows them to do. But in that section, there is a direction on how to deal with this. And there's a general where it says, here's any portion. First building restructuring shall be permitted with original or light materials and original methods of construction, subject to chapter. There's another section that says unsafe conditions, unsafe condition, theme of the affiliate official shall, shall be remedied. So it actually gives you that it is an unsafe condition that has some effects. And then there's a replacement condition. So this replacement of existing or missing features using original material shall be permitted, period. And it says partial replacement or repair that matched the original configuration, height, size shall be permitted. So it actually, and then it goes on to say replacement of pleasing or hazardous locations have to comply with chapter point four. So if you find an unsafe condition, if your e-res requirements have to be operated with prior knowledge, that's where we came to, we have a decision. And so we're here today to ask, I mean, we did do a lot of research and we did find a company that creates reproduction wood windows. There are some of the best that we found. I think you guys worked with them before, rebound windows out of Varane. So they make solid windows, they're meant to replicate this thing. They've been tested, they've got the information on them. They need self-stay, they need to get out of the building. So, you know, if you look at that, you can see that's still, that's on the front of the building. They replicate an existing window. Um so we're proposing to set a screwing sixty percent of the building windows that have always operated shut completely forever. Um which, I have to say, still creates, in my opinion, a safety issue, because my kids, five year old. If a fire is rolling on the floor, it goes to the first window, it's nailed shut, he goes to the next window, nailed shut. He will never return, he does our bang and scream, he possibly did that. So if there's a fire situation, I'm not sure if sh, screwing windows, although that is an option, a great option for me, so. What I propose today was, I would like to ask the board permission to replace with. Whole building has reproduction wood windows, which right now, actually the back of the building, I hired avenues. So it was gonna be the reproduction upfront, but the back could have been, you know, probably something a little bit normal to say. So we're proposing to do the entire building in the reproduction windows. Um where some of the other windows, and then in my, I I did go to school for architecture, and I do have appreciation for historic buildings. So one of the things that I noticed on a lot of historic structures that on High Road, there's multiple on High Road. Uh I got married at Spencer Pierce Farm, all of those structures have sear shape. And they get replaced periodically, I think a lot of my High Road recently got replaced. So in my opinion, you know, replacing the wood windows is a major, major safety jump forward, it allows us to meet code. Um and then on top of it, I think the sear shaped roof is gonna really, really add, it's gonna recreate that look of all the other. True historic homes on High Road and throughout the state of Massachusetts that can now be maintained going forward in the original character. Storm windows are not original, asphalt roofing is not original, all of that stuff, but wood windows with wood roofs is, so. Um respectfully, I mean, hopefully, we can get support to possibly um replace with these. Reprovision.
Is there anything further?
So at the end of the day, it consists of both clients um would have to replace these one window in each room with this window in any event. And it's been said that uh in order to make code, we'd have to permanently shut the rest of the windows, because nothing anyone wants to. Um and uh, so we prefer to just do the all the windows. As we're calling the reductions. The theater group on and end up with a safe and currently looking uh restored disorder. Thank you very much for your consideration, I haven't answered any questions, so the board hides out.
Um can we take a look at the window? Come on. If we break in the body?
That's the way out there, and it's. It's about absolute comfort. Right, or risk of breaking fingers, something like that.
Okay. I'm gonna reserve questions until we get to que- questions, and we'll see what else the public might have, but thank you for bringing that. Um so while members of the Z B A are passing around our. Our uh. Go and tell. Um I'm going to close that portion of the presentation on the trust for my modification. And I'm going to. Find anyone who might be, I guess. Share a public comment, uh anyone in the room? If you uh like to share a comment or be heard, please just feel free to raise your hand, and we will, we'll give you the floor. Seeing no hands in the room, uh I'll go on. And of our attendees. Only five attendees logged in, um anyone who is listening wish. I see Glenn Richards. Um Richard, you can go ahead and unmute your mic, it will be the same, and you'll have a floor, sir.
Okay, thank you very much, uh assuming you can hear me, it's Glenn Richards, six Kent Street. First start by saying, the historical, you know I'm with the commission, but the commission has not reviewed this uh change request, so I.
Yeah, we can't hear you, but we see, we see that you're speaking, but your mic is muted.
Let's see, well, it says I'm unmuted, let me see, uh a second, let me try something different.
And again, we uh we can't hear you, but we can tell from the Zoom uh notation of the microphone icon that you're speaking. You wanna just bottom left, make sure you unmute your mic?
Can you hear me now? Can you hear me now?
All right.
Are you still not hearing me? Why don't you go to the next person if you can, and I'll see if I can straighten myself out.
No, that's what I'm trying to, oh, yeah.
All right, um let's do this.
It's not pulling it from the owl. Did you switch it to the owl?
Glenn, give us a moment, we're gonna ask you to pause for just a second, we might, we believe it might be on our end, and uh. We're gonna try to change something here, and we'll. Give you the. Just a moment. Glenn, can you hear us?
I can hear you, can you hear me? Uh yeah, I was hearing you the whole time.
Great, uh we we apologize, Glenn, that was uh on our end, but we uh we can hear you now, and you can hear us, so um.
Okay, no, no problem. All right, very quickly, um Glenn Richards, six Kent Street, and although I'm with the historical commission, the commission has not reviewed this. So I'm speaking just for myself here, not on behalf of the commission or anything like that, so just wanna make that clear. Um I only had a a small screen phone to review the plans on, but anyway, all I wanted to say was, you know, I understand uh the problem with the fire codes, the egress, et cetera. And I certainly appreciate uh that the uh the the kind of windows they're looking at are, appear to be, you know, very good quality reproductions. Uh so all I would say is that um while on the one hand uh changing from restored windows to replaced windows, I wouldn't call that a quote minor modification. However, under the circumstances, you know, I understand the need for it. And uh I, all I would suggest is that the, if the, you know, that the Z B A just tried to um, you know, uh ensure that they do in fact use. Uh the type of high quality reproduction style uh window that uh is, you know, thermally effective and all that, but yet. Uh especially from more than a couple of feet away, will will look furry, will mimic the look of the original windows uh with good fidelity. That's, that is, you know, as you all know, it's very important, uh but I kind of, you know. I don't think it's gonna be a fatal change myself personally, um just being for myself, as long as they do use those, you know, quality windows with uh. Well, you know, three dimensional mountains and the whole bit, uh and I think that's all I wanna say, thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Richards. Um I um I can circle back, just in case you have anything else you wish to add, but for now, I'm just going to see if there's anyone else. Um online via Zoom who wishes to raise their hand and be heard. All right, seeing no hands in that once more in the room, anyone who wished to be heard? Um thank you very much, uh so we will close the public comment portions of the public hearing and go right into questions from the board, and we'll start um. Uh we'll start with Mr. Swan.
Uh yeah, thank you, um.
I I guess, um I guess we just have the chair of the historic commission on who uh. Have you guys done, I I know back last year when you went through this process, you spent a long time with your store commission.
Oh, yes.
Have you been back in front of them this year? So this change?
No, we didn't, um only because the um historic commission. Had issued, you know, their original statement where we had proposed to do the um restoration of the windows. Um and so, um and again, we had agreed to that, that was our intention until this problem came to light, so. Um I know Ben did reach out and talk with some of the uh members of the trust and maybe even some of the members of the commission individually, but um. Again, where this was a code driven thing, and we did our research to make sure uh that we used um the highest quality reproduction windows. We we were able to determine that the um green mountain window indoor company had been utilized. Uh for restoration of windows in the city before, and again, as was suggested by Mr. Richards, um my clients will in fact commit. To using these very windows that we've um that we've shown you and uh. Uh again, have been proven uh as effective reproductions in the city, so I'm also willing to commit to.
You got to come, yeah, so. I'm also willing to, which wasn't in the last approval, to the entire building. So right now, you know, it may have been Anderson in the back and re, you know, refinishing. I'm I'm willing to commit to the reproduction windows, but also really committing to requiring it on on every single window in the building.
I guess my question was was more, I I realize what you're posing to do, my question was more about. Um you're involved with the historic commission, because the way this happened last year, this is kind of a big project. And it it was over the threshold, the historic mission had to thoroughly review this thing and give us input. And that was a key input that we used in making our decision, I was here on that decision, and I supported the decision. Um and uh. The, my concern is, I mean, I know Mr. Richards said, well, I kind of like some of this stuff, but he also said, I don't think this is a major, a minor modification. And he also said, I'm only speaking like for myself, because the commission hasn't seen this. So, I mean, the purpose of tonight is more to think, is this, is this a minor modification? We already have one guy saying, I don't think it's minor, and we don't know how the rest of them feel. I just feel a little awkward when I, when I look at their their um. Their advice to us from last year, this is one of the key points they made, that, you know, they're doing a lot of stuff, but they're restoring all the windows. Now, I realize the fire chief has said the ones on the side need access. I realize, you know, those, I get it, that you, I I don't think you have a solution, I mean, and I would think the historic commission would probably agree with that, because you have no other choice. But when it comes to the ones on the front, which is the primary facade that faces um the rest of the city. Um I don't know how they feel, you know, I know, I heard one guy say, he's okay with it, but I don't know the rest of them feel, and for me. They were a big part of, they are always a big part on one of these as input to us, when it's, when it triggers the D O C D bylaw. They, they are a big influence, and it was so important to them last year, I. I would have felt much better tonight if you had said, oh yeah, we stopped at their meeting last week, and we bounced around with them, I know you didn't have to.
Well, I did reach out to the trust, um I haven't gotten great willingness to work at this point. So I pushed to push to try to meet, and you know, so we, that is part of our 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 decision, but you know, and just so you know, it's not just we compete in the front. We don't just need an egress, these windows were deemed unsafe for for a a specific hotel use, because if they live, they can, they can slam shut.
No, I understand, but you mentioned there was another alternative, which is just to keep them shut. And I realize you may not want to do that, but I don't know, I I would like to hear the historic experts on on that. We don't have a lot of, we don't have a lot of inns and hotels in New York, we hardly ever see these things, I I'm not surprised we, we're kind of learning here as we go.
Yeah, 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 I didn't know this code even.
And and I'm glad you're seeing the neighbors soon to ask them about some of the changes, I, it would have been more powerful if you'd already seen them when you got here today.
Yeah, well, I I did, in my defense, I did, I waited around for an hour, and you know, though it showed, so we had to reschedule. Uh we're kind of, I don't know what happened, but you know, I did go to the meeting, we did short reading again this week, uh but it does come down to, you know. Kind of realistically, you know, I I did hire a professional co consultant when when I couldn't get the trust involvement, so I I actually brought his his email with me. Uh and he is explosive in email is that, you know, although you proposed it, you know, he spoke to me as, i- i- it's not your right to take that risk. Chapter twelve is not written, it actually improved in the last version, it was actually chapter eleven. And right in the first paragraph, but it says, chapter twelve is meant for homeowners who would like to be exempt from code by the building inspector. And it says exclusively, the chapter shell cannot be used to force a homeowner to abide by chapter twelve, so. It was chapter twelve eleven back then, chapter twelve changed a little bit, and there's scope up top, but what we kind of came to is, you know, we're in this. Part of like, there is nothing that I found in the code for a forced unsafe living condition, because right now, you know, it's not just so the A M M A testing, which is now, I have it written down. It's it's got changed into some other glazing society, it's not just operational constraints and balances, it's it's impact testing, it's it's. Um I I actually wrote down exactly what it is, but um so actually, I'll read it, they, so they go through. The reason why new windows are meant for new construction windows, and it's not just that, they go through water leakage, air leakage, structural strength, performance entry for, you know, forced entry performance. Life cycle durability, component performance, so it gets to even screwing them shut. There's hundred percent an argument to be made that that's still unsafe, because it's a light, the window is forced to look just like the other two windows, so a five year old in a fire condition crawling on the floor. That is a very unsafe condition to have a window that's non operable, but looks operable.
If not, I I just wanted, you mentioned you tried to reach out to the historic group, you didn't mention historic, you mentioned historic trust. Did you try to reach out to the historic?
I think we did, so our original filings, we were planning to go to historic, but the consensus was that, you know, the recommendation, you know, comes to, they want to preserve the windows, so they're not gonna. Take a code position, like, of course, their job is historic preservation.
We don't, I mean, we look for their input, and they don't talk about code, they just give us input on on, from their perspective, they're not code experts.
Yeah, and it does say, I mean, chapter twelve also, I mean, it does say that like, you know, just like on Merrill Street, the house that was forced to be torn down. Is, there's a specific code that unsafe conditions are deemed to be, they have to be.
Realize, I'm not asking about the code, I'm simply asking you, if you went back to the people who advised us last time.
Yeah, sorry, yeah.
That's all I'm asking.
I think that was the original tension, I'm not sure what happened, yeah.
Let's, um, let me just pause for a moment, not to interrupt uh Mr. Swan's flow, but but Andy, sorry, just in terms of uh procedures, just in terms of coordination of the office, just to be fair, you know, uh. Um we, the office in any way, when the applicant was consulting with our team, uh I guess our sense, I would speak to myself as director, we didn't necessarily think that the historic commission would change its position relative preservation, given it was already part of the project, uh recommended previously and part of the permit here. Uh and perhaps that's, you know, assumed too much, but that seems likely to be the outcome, and given that they uh, the building commissioner had basically already conveyed some of the information we're talking about here about. Safety of the windows, we had heard that information or interpretation from him, uh as our code enforcement official, we weren't necessarily assuming that that would be overridden by the historic commission per se. So um it, well, certainly, the uh the applicant be directed back based on something being considered more major in nature related to permit, in fact, the historic vision. Um we didn't necessarily think it was gonna result in anything different, uh in terms of the feedback you might just hear, um so you might still be posed the same question, and I would imagine historic vision suggesting the windows be uh. Any, any options, you know, if you looked at to see if those windows were restored uh in accordance with where you all.
Okay, um Mr. Swan, I I didn't mean to cut you off, but I want to give you the opportunity to uh tear. Yeah, no, I mean, questions too, so. I I I hear you, Andy, but we've already heard one of the historic commission members say, well, I kind of like the windows, so if they all said that, then this would be easy. You know what I mean? So it's, anyway, I that was just my my question, it was really more of a, they're the people who advise us, and I'd be curious how they felt about it.
Yeah.
Uh and to help one of them already say it's not a minor modification, it makes me wonder. Makes me wonder, anyway, I will, I will pass on to the next person. Very good, uh Mr. Better.
Well, I have no questions, I I guess I have a question for the chair or for Andy. Did. When and under what circumstances does the historic commission have the authority or the right to issue comments to us relative to something of of this nature?
Sure, uh so on their own accord, they can do so whenever they wish, on any matter, really. Um here in relation to the ordinance, when an application is filed for a permit, the initial application that comes in, the ordinance required that be brought into the historic commission in those given instances. Throughout the historic commission, they're given a time period to comment, in this case, the applicant was asking for a modification. I'm trying to think of how many instances this sort of situation has come up between, I don't know, the Z B A or the planning board, you know, since uh recent ordinance in years, but. In essence, um I think in part, what we sometimes assume will happen is, if to catch a boy, you know, and and I think, I'll just speak for myself again. I had felt this was the more significant change, given where the prior, where the initial permit had left off, with the expectation worth that time.
Excuse me, let me just ask a few questions that will help me. Uh the request for minor modification was filed with the zoning board review, correct?
The rezonable details, correct.
Okay, correct, right. And I take it that the historical commission has access to the agenda?
That's correct. I mean, we don't actively.
Just let me finish.
Sure.
And is it, is it, I mean, so did the zone, did you or anybody in the zoning office receive any communication from the historical commission regarding this project?
Yeah, I hope you're aware of that.
Is it fair to say that the historical commission was aware of this? I mean, don't they review the agendas?
Well, that, again, that I cannot.
I mean, I'm asking you to speculate, but would it be a reasonable assumption to assume that the historical commission, if it had an interest in this, would have weighed in?
I, I can't, I can't.
Gotcha. I understand. I think would be a reasonable assumption.
I'll, I'll say, I'll just, as just sort of a parenthetical comment to what we've heard so far, I, I think that it's, it's never, I don't believe, and correct me if I'm wrong, Andy. I don't believe that it's the applicant's determination as to whether it is minor or major. They present what they would like to do and it is vetted through the scrutiny of the, of the office to determine whether they believe in their sort of objective role. And, and their principles, you know, to.
But that was the second.
Like tip of the spear.
Basically, I wasn't asking about whether it's a minor modification or not. I was asking procedure whereby the historical commission gains access to information relative to a matter pending before the zoning board of appeals.
Well, and my answer was in response to that mainly because there's a distinction between what's available on the internet or what they might follow, you know, actively on their own, the agendas. Versus something that is actively going out and triggered by the ordinance or by office in accordance with regulations. So that obviously would be an automatic to them. Here, they may not automatically be notified about something. There might be some sort of consultation or comments that give us. And, you know, to the chair's point, I think I see this as something where this is the specific reason why essentially the office had routed this material back to you and did not see it in any way, a little piece, for instance, as something that the staff a minor modification that staff could sign off on. This was something that had to go back to the board. And then the board here would have to decide whether to want it furthered back anyways from another board or continue into the hearing to get more information or a hearing is advertised.
Just to be clear. The matter was filed. It was public document. It was on the agenda. Staff of the zoning board of appeals did not transmit that to the historical commission because it had no legal obligation to do this. Okay, now, let me ask another question. I understand the zoning officer determined all of these requests to be minor modifications.
Then they, again, if the board is, I was not myself. I did not feel myself, again, the zoning administrator and I, so we discuss these matters typically when there's something on that, on that sort of line, if you will. I think I certainly felt, and again, when the office, remember the decisions say that the zoning administrator can run some things as minor modifications. Essentially to me, I was not comfortable that the window change here was something that could be done as a minor modification, just to be clear. There's a spectrum of modification procedures that someone can use. Some of them are so small that could be done as a staff level change under your permits. Some of them are triggered by the ordinance and have to be routed back to the board.
I understand there are administrative minor modifications, which can be just that, approved at the administrative level. Is that what you're saying? Okay, all right. So there are also, I understand, minor modifications that have to be approved by the zoning board of appeals?
Correct.
Okay, now. Mr. DeShane, I thought in a letter from, that you sent to us, that you indicated that the whole kit and caboodle was approved by the zoning officers, minor modifications. Am I misreading that?
I, I think it's a function of semantics. Sir, in, in my understanding, there are actually three levels of modifications. One are changes which your zoning and planning group determine are, and I'm not going to use the word minor because that's a secondary, that are of such nature that they can be handled at the administrative level. And those are things that are in keeping with the permit. Like for instance, going from a, a, a bed deck with this big stairs to a smaller stair. So those are administrative changes. And those are the things that I went through earlier tonight. Those have been these little administrative things that we worked with staff. And they've said, you know, we can approve those. The second level of modifications, and this is one where I don't, as you pointed out, thank you. I don't say this is a minor modification. We submit a letter saying we'd like to make a change. Do you deem this a administrative level minor or a major change? When a change is deemed minor, as these, this window change was, the process is to come back to this board and address it at this level. If it's deemed a full major modification, we're essentially required to stop the process over, meaning a hearing with the historic commission, a hearing with you, public notice to the neighbors. So those are major modifications. And those are, I believe, would have triggered a need to start over with historic, start over with you, start over with neighbors.
Well, let me interrupt you. Are you contending this is a minor modification?
I.
Are you contending that the zoning board of appeals can approve this as a minor modification?
Yeah, sir. And that determination, however, was not made by me. It was made by your staff and the zoning determination order. When I said, we want to make this change, they're the ones that said, it's not an administrative change, Doug. It does fall in a minor modification, which requires us to come back to you. They also said, Luna, it wasn't a major.
Okay, I, I have not done, I have one question, sir. Excuse me. So I would like you to tell me why you believe this is a minor modification, subject to approval by the zoning board.
Well, it is my personal opinion, because I'm not able to deem it.
Legal opinion, not your personal.
Right, but the truth, sir, is this is not a, I don't believe this rises to the level of a major change to this project because it's just not substantial. When you consider all of the terms and conditions and all of the approvals that went into this restoration of the building, while it may seem to be the most important thing to say the historic commission or perhaps some of you members, the fact that we're going to go from restoring the windows to replacing them with exact reproductions in the scale of the project. Yes, sir, I, I feel it's a minor, which requires your consideration.
Thank you.
Robert. Yeah. Mr. Bennet, was there anything further? Okay, again, to the point of clarification, again, because I realize that, you know, Doug was speaking to some of the sort of terms level, so to speak. When, you know, myself, the zoning administrator, when we feel that there's something that is substantive in nature to the original approval, either from the writ decision, say, special conditions focus specifically on preservation of windows or something substantive based on the record of the hearing, you know, there's a lot of talk about those windows, or there's a common plan, it was discovered in relation, you know, things like that. That's a situation in which we might say, this is substantive enough to send back to the board. So even to the board to determine whether or not to, it feels it needs input or another body or wants to have an advertised public hearing in order to order by the permit. We were just saying essentially, we don't think that this window component is something that staff level could do. Move over the deck, for instance, we didn't necessarily feel that that was a problem to do at staff level. Because we didn't see it to be a, in addition, and it's likely a problem given that the board had originally approved it included, so.
Yeah, okay, thank you, Andy. I'm going to move on to your questions from your board and then we might take a quick pause to unpack one or more of these points. But Mr. Shannon, any questions from you?
I had a question as to what was put in front of us. It relates to the deck. It's more just to understand. So the decks were originally put there for two forms of egress from the second floor. And now everything says, we don't need to. That because people.
So actually, so I, I didn't do the original plan, but I was, I went to architecture school, so what I did is that second unit, that was their means of egress. So I reconfigured the interior. So we took the plans from the architect and I kind of like took a second look at it for my background. Reconfigured the layout a little bit and was able to dump their second means of egress into the hallway instead of directly out. So it kind of took some reconfiguring.
But there are stills to egress.
Yes, yes.
It's not out the back door.
Yeah, just every unit doesn't have to go directly to the outside. They just need to have one in the front, which that unit had that side stair. And then their second goes out that one. Yeah, so it just took a second look at it.
I thought maybe the fire code had collapsed in two months.
Excellent, thank you. Anything further?
Nope.
All right, respect me.
Yes, I have quite a few notes. And may I say something to Mr. Bennet? In response to the point that he made, Mr. Bennet, when I was on that historical question, I did, you know, follow this agenda very closely. It takes quite a bit of time because things get continued and then there are late files and people ask for something that's minor modification and not notified. I think I was perhaps unusual in following applications from the N H C to the E B A. And that's how I got here.
I appreciate that.
But I wanted to ask, let's consider the plan in which you could replace one window for sleeping room. And Mr. Swan mentioned the side elevation. If you're citing safety concerns, I, I've been in zero into hotels where there were operable windows on upper floors. I've never been in a hotel where I could just simply open the window that much. Is the intent to have guests on the upper floors able to fully open a window whenever they want? Or is it just a fire safety concern in case there's a five-year-old?
Well, you mean with respect to providing one code meeting egress window and closing the others permanently?
Like what, if you're replacing them wholesale, is it because you want hotel guests to be able to open the windows and stick their head out?
Yes, well.
Because that seems unusual to me as a guest.
Quite honestly, it isn't a function of, 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 you know, being able to look out or, you know, get air because of course there would always be that one required window. It really comes down to a safety issue. I mean, if you had a room that had three windows or four, you know, the idea of having three out of the four shut and they all look identical, it, it just presents a I think an odd safety issue. And again, if it was my own home, I have the right to be able to, you know, make that decision because the people staying in my home will hopefully not open their own windows. But when you're talking to people coming out of town or, you know, out of the country and everything else, I just wouldn't want, and my clients just wouldn't want to have all identical windows, but only one works to get out of the building in an emergency. That's really, it all comes down to the safety. It really does. And, and to be honest, these reproduction windows are going to be indistinguishable from the windows that are there today and won't have ugly storm windows over.
Okay, can I, I'm going to stick with that other plan though. So, so I know when, when Scott Brown was the architect on this project, he really insisted on the restoration of the windows. And again, the applicant assured the historical commission that the developer would repair and restore rather than replace the historic windows. And then the advisory report says possibly some original windows. I know you did consult with a preservation trust. I understand that once you decided to replace the windows, their enthusiasm for volunteering to help you with that, I, I can understand if they kind of withdrew from that. But the city, the reason that I'm wondering, again, the same thing Mr. Bennet asked, how it can be considered a minor modification? This city has a publication called Guidelines for Preservation and Replacement of Historical Windows in New York Order, under which it says only windows deteriorated beyond repair should be replaced. And the D C O D ordinance outright says that one of the purposes of our zoning is to help perpetuate and maintain the established skill of local tradespeople, in this case, window restoration experts. So I wonder if you've looked at that publication? Do you have a copy of any assessment or any quote that you got from someone like Alison Hardy, the window woman? She's not the only person, but maybe they're well-known.
So, yeah, we did. So I, I completely understand. I mean, I've been saying since day one, I don't want to set precedent. I don't want anything to continue into any other's application. We did talk to window woman, we talked to a second guy. So we've talked to multiple guys. It's actually a lot cheaper for me to re, to repair the windows, like drastically. And then if you add on the roof, it's drastically, it's, it's pennies on the dollar versus what we're offering. But why, my opinion why we're here today is, I didn't start that this is an opinion. This is a code, it actually says in chapter 12 that if something's deemed unsafe, that's it. And I got a letter from a code consultant that literally spells out that exact same thing. If there's something deemed unsafe, there is procedures to follow in chapter 12. It's not an opinion. Listen, my kids ride in the backseat of my car with a car seat and car seatbelts on. That's how I function. If people want to throw their three-year-old in the front seat of their car and hope that nothing bad ever happens, then that's fine, but I'm going to fight to make sure people are safe.
Right, okay.
You know, so, and that's where I get to, I did follow up on that. So that was the first question the building inspector asked me and said, you need to prove to me that you can't build these windows into compliance. So that struck me into a couple of weeks. This has been going on for a while. So that struck me into a couple of weeks to talk to window repairs people, this and that. And that led to me, it's not possible because it's not compliance as if I think they're kind of compliant. It's either you're compliant or you're not. And the only compliance is you have to meet the new certification of windows, which is, and I looked into the procedures of the the A A M certification process, which is now changed. For a private citizen, it's completely unbeatable. It's lab testing. It's, it's big money. It's basically creating your own window company, going through the rigorous testing progress. And that's the only way you can actually meet code. And, you know, now that we know that there is a safety violation, now that we've pointed out to clear violation, that I don't think there's any dispute that these windows do violate, you know, what happens if something does happen? Who's getting sued? That's where it comes down to if there's a wrongful death or something, you know, and, and we kind of came this direction. Because obviously we don't want to, A, pre-create a precedent. I don't want to draw attention that somebody else is going to be piggyback. I would like people to keep historic windows. I originally wanted to keep these historic windows. So we figured instead of pushing a code override that would not take litigation or board meetings, we figured that a litigation option is the best generous option to try to say, hey, let's give everybody their say, let's explain our side of the story. And then let's offer something that that roof is going to cost way more than all of those windows combined, you know. So then, so that's kind of where we were like, I think let's give before we take, you know, and that's what we tried to do in the beginning. Unfortunately, I don't have an option. If you guys vote, I was already told that if those windows are repaired the way they sit, I won't get a certificate of occupancy. And so unless they're screwed shut, and at that point, I hate to say it with a person with kids, I have to argue that, that, you know, there is a difference. The hotels that you would say, there's different codes. So commercial buildings that are over three stories do not require operable egress windows. They have a whole different set of codes, but they have different sets of stair egress requirements. That is, three stories and above, they look at it as, well, you're not going to jump out the window, a ladder's not going to reach you. So we're going to increase your safety egress requirements and that's how you work it. But on smaller buildings that are two, three stories and below, they do require egress requirements and people do rely on opening windows. And, you know, I know this isn't the purview in this one, historical, but to screw shut the entire southern side of a building is drastically against, I thought, everything what this city stands for in terms of green energy and environmental safety and design. Because this thing is going to have heat gain like no tomorrow, if the entire south side of this property is screwed shut. We don't have the correct insulation because we can't beat six-inch stud walls. So we're going to have increased heat into the building. And we're going to rely solely to keep this building satisfied. We're going to rely heavily and solely on mini splits and air conditioning.
Okay, so you're saying that, so you're, you're trying to say, yes, there, we recognize that there are exemptions for historic buildings, but you're saying not really, not in a way that's practical.
Not commercial in a transient city facility.
Can I, can I interject for a moment? It just takes the privilege of the chair for a moment, that spec, I think, Oscar diligence as well as Mr. McGarry's. We have our building codes commissioner on the attendees on Zoom and his hands up. So I'd like to take a pause since this is feeling directly in the matters code. We, we need to guess. We have Mr. Greg Earls. Earl's, I suspect you've here also can do, and I see your hand up, and we're going to acknowledge you. And I'm, we're hopeful that you've been listening and can offer some insight to help fill out and round out this discussion. So you have the floor.
Thank you. Can you hear me?
We can, thank you.
Great. I did, I did meet with the applicant before this meeting, a few days before the meeting. And I reiterated many times that it is not a code issue. There is one egress window that would be to the side elevations for every sleeping room. That's all that's required. These windows are not required for egress by any code. The condition they are in now is a safety hazard. If they were repaired, so they weren't a safety hazard or even fastened shut, there's no code issue. They're not being repaired. They're not, if they're not being replaced, they don't have to hit the window association specifications. So there's nothing here that's code as it stands. Now, I'm not saying that you may want or not want, you know, fixed windows in the. Now, I'm not saying that you may want or not want, you know, fixed windows in the city. But I I couldn't keep just sitting still here and thinks and hearing that it's a code violation. It is not. It will be a code violation if they operate the way they do now and they try to get a C of O. But fastened shut, which is the simplest, perhaps not the greatest, but the simplest solution, it would, it would get a C of O. You have one egress window per sleeping room.
Greg, we're no longer getting you?
Yeah, I think I froze.
Okay, there you go.
Okay.
So, so if they were, I'm going to ask a question if I could, not to get into too much of the dialogue, but this is important for us, I'll give it for my colleagues. The, uh, does it not, isn't it a trade of one sort of, is it fair to say that it's a trade of one code violation for another? The windows as they currently exist are fastened shut?
So that wouldn't be a code.
Hold on, hold on. I just, I want to hear, forgive me, then I want to hear from Mr. Earls. So, so if they, the windows were repaired and restored and they would still have to be fastened shut, correct?
No, if they operated in a safe manner, they would be, they could be used as an egress window.
What's a safe manner? What, what, what does that mean?
It can't slam, it can't slam shut on your fingers, basically. It has to stay up, stay up in its own power and keep the opening that's required. Five, uh, five square feet.
So it has to be, there has to be enough friction in its, in its action or counterbalance so that once opened, it stays wherever it's left, doesn't it help?
Counterbalance friction, you're right. Anything to keep it open. Again, it's not my, it's not my job to design it. I'm not trying to sound like a wise guy. I, I, it just has to meet code as it's written.
Okay. Any members of the Z B A, and I know the spec and you were still speaking, you still have some questions, but while we have Mr. Earls, with respect to any questions, because we're in the questions from the board. Then Mr. Shanes and Mr. Gary, I'll give you the floor as well. But anyone want to pose a question to Mr. Earls? Yes.
Mr. Earls, it's wonderful to have you on the phone. This is Ken Swan and I'm from the board as well. I I have a question. I just want to make sure I understand this. So if you have one of these sleeping rooms in this inn, if, if the side window is operable and meets code to open, it can be an egress window. That takes care of the need for the windows in the room to meet code. As long as the windows, the other windows either stay open by themselves when they're lifted or can't be opened. Is that a good summary of what you just told us?
That's correct.
Okay, thank you. I think I finally got this. Thank you. It's been great having you here. Thank you. I agree. Okay. Mr. Bennet, anything for Mr. Earls?
I don't, that's been very helpful.
Very good. Mr. Chen.
No.
And, uh, Miss Pecknick, was there anything that you had for?
I just want to thank Mr. Earls because that's jogging my memory about a conversation we had about windows on thirty Winter Street some years ago, that you repair the jams, the windows operate correctly.
Okay.
And there's no code violation.
Um, attorney Shanes, uh, while we have Mr. Earls, since we've taken this, we're taking this off ramp, we're gonna, we're going to hang out here at the, uh, the rest stop for a second and then I want to get back on track. But, but we're on an off ramp. We have Mr. Earls and the favor of his involvement.
No, I, I appreciate his involvement, but I do believe and I hope that our presentation that it was in fact consistent with what Mr. Earls had said, and that is, we could do one replacement window per room. And then the other windows would either have to be shuttered, closed, or if they could be reconstructed to stay open on their own. And I just want to let the board know that we did talk with the window restoration people. And to take those windows and then create an effective counterbalance mechanism, you know, with the weights and everything. You're, you're doing a whole lot more than restoring those windows. You're essentially taking apart, rebuilding them with new jams, new weights, it's just near impossible. You know, it's just not feasible. And again, with all due respect, we do not accept the idea that we would have to shut a window.
Okay, can I throw one thing to?
Sure.
Just, there you go. Is, you know, the windows on the side and, and, you know, maybe we had this connection that I, you know, that's where I thought we left it on Friday. But in my opinion, and listen, this is, this is coming from a father who's maybe a little bit over sensitive on safety that's always being construction, but, you know, if you have one window that is a new window that meets the A A requirements, but then other windows look exactly the same and open and shut and this and that, how would you ever know which one's safe, fully safe? You know, they'd be indistinguishable at that point, you know, and at that point, you know, a child or an adult is not going to know that this window operates, but it doesn't fully operate completely safe and, and open. But that one over there definitely does. There's, they're going to be indistinguishable. And, you know, the reason why, you know, I called the window lady and all them, they didn't have good solutions to be able to make a window that doesn't have fully systems and stuff like that to stay that way and definitely not over the test of that. So it's not something we know that's going to stay. So I would just slightly disagree, but you know, that's kind of, I guess, that's where the mitigation comes in. You know, without the group, like maybe.
I, I appreciate that, Mr. McGarry. Commissioner Earl, before we sort of close this out, anything that you wanted to add or comment on before we sort of move along? And thank you for your comments and for being here.
Uh, just, just one thing. I, I'm not disagreeing that it would be unsafe the way it is now. But the one window is all that's required in the sleeping room. Any, everything else is either up to appeal with the B B R S, which is my oversight board, or with you. I just don't want it running into a code issue. It's not. It's about your decision.
Okay. All right. Uh, thank you, Commissioner Earl, and I appreciate your, your input.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Okay. So continuing in questions from the board, we were, was Pecknick.
I just had one last question.
Yeah, you were, you were in your.
And it was sort of given your, your concerns about safety. Could you, could you respond again to um, Mr. Shagnes' point about removing the second floor deck as a means of egress, given those safety concerns?
But yeah, it was, uh, so we, we, we always knew that was a concern to reduce the size. Uh, we obviously would rather have a bigger backyard. We know that was a big concern to the neighbors. Uh, so after I got the pass back with the architect, I took a second look at it.
Can you say again that decks are a big concern of neighbors? Are you hearing this? Decks are a big concern of neighbors.
Well, at least in this situation, they didn't want people smoking cigarettes out there.
It was back then.
I just wanted to hear it.
Yeah, I think it was basically, they didn't want people out there smoking at like eleven o'clock at night and have. Yeah, so if I could make it to a platform, which did take, it wasn't, you know, in defense of the architects, it did take some serious config. I almost had to redesign the entire property, uh, but we did able to get them. The inside of the property had to be completely reconfigured, but I was able to dump the door on, you know, you have them all doors hit that one, that one. So, uh, yeah, so that's that. And, you know, I guess, you know, it comes down to this is, i- i- it's, it's an uncomfortable situation. I, I have my, you know, stance and, and what I feel. I respect, you know, the, uh, building commissioners, you know, uh, opinion. I, I definitely can see where everybody's coming from. I always err to the side of, of, you know, safety. Uh, I do still feel very, and I get what he's saying, that it is code required that one window in the room is egress. But it's a very neat situation to have, you know, typically in a window like, like in a room like this, if that window's egress, then you could pretty much guarantee all the rest of them are also going to be aggressive. They have the exact same size and they have the exact same double on. It's an unexpected condition to have multiple windows in the room operate the same, but not reliable.
But if it's restored correctly in the jam.
But that's the thing we can't, so that's, if I could do that, then I wouldn't have to replace that window. The, the cause for replacing that window is because I believe, in my opinion, is it's accepted that those windows cannot be restored to match.
You have something that we could look at from Alison Hardy or somebody else saying they did an onsite assessment and is it possible to restore the window?
Well, then you can restore. I mean, they have sticky, like, they have like rub rails that they can slap into the jam. But they're, they can, like, like you said, if they worked perfectly, then I wouldn't have to replace that one egress window. Because they're all the same size open, right? So the only difference between the restored windows and the one that I have to replace is that one is reliable and one is not. One has a certification, one does not. The certification means one is safe. One maybe safe, but maybe not. And that's the whole reason. If they were definitely safe, then we would meet code and we wouldn't have to replace that window. So it's a decision. I mean, we can screw them shut, which I think goes, I think that goes against everything on that side or, you know, but that, that is the problem with that operation is we can make, they're basically rub strips that go inside of it, but it's, it's, as everybody thought, and they don't over test the time, a year to win, the rubbing gets a little less, they're not test stressed it, they're not longevity stressed it, tested. So in my opinion, the reason why I'm here, the reason why I'm offering a very, very expensive roof is because I just would like to sleep tight that this, this building is going to be safe for a long period of time. You know, and make sure it's always safe, so.
Okay. Um, thank you, Mr. McGarry. Thank you, Attorney Shanes and Mr. Pecknick. Anything further, uh, Mr. Peck?
No, thank you.
Okay. I, I, I won't add to the questions. I think we've, I don't have any new questions. We haven't already unpacked, to say the least. With that, I'm going to close that section, uh, and we'll go into deliberations. I, I think as a board, let's, um, let's speak to the elephant in the room, um, you know, uh, figuratively, of course, first, which is, um, what is the, what, what, what is the, um, sense of the board collectively and the individual sense of board members individually, um, regarding whether this is in fact a minor modification? Because that's a finding we must make, um, to ratify the initial determination by the, uh, by the planning office. Uh, we must make the finding that it is indeed minor, that each of these three sections of it are minor. And we're speaking to the, um, the change to the rear elevation, the change to the left elevation, which is the, um, is that going to be the lower of the elevation? Uh, and, no?
Excuse me, just, uh, I have, just there's a point of order. Um, the only question that's before the board is whether or not the window change is a minor modification. The other changes have already been made administrative and I just wanted to give you a heads up.
You're, you're absolutely right. Thank you. Uh, thank you, Attorney Shanes. Not to make this any more complicated than it needs to be. That's, that's my, my, uh, my omission. Um, so it's whether or not we, um, as a board feel that this is minor with respect to the, the replacement of historic reproduction, true divided light wooden sash, but not original in this, um, for all the reasons that we've heard. And then, uh, we can delve into it beyond that. So let's start with.
Hey, I'm sorry, Chair. And then, uh, the other items, those we're taking up separately or, uh, from the, given, given that some might be treated as minor items and some might be.
The other items Jennifer thought were minor.
Right. Just want to make sure we're on the same page, but.
No, I think.
Right.
We, uh, we, we're simply dealing with the windows.
Correct, yeah.
So the other changes were administrative.
We just wanted to make sure there's no question that you're all discussing about it, correct?
No, no, we're, we're, we're discussing all the, all that we have before us is all that we're going to discuss, but just the windows. Uh, and, and again, I apologize for creating that confusion. Um, so, uh, Mr. Swan, let's start with, let's start with you.
All right. You know, I, I have been here, what, over three years now. I've probably seen eight minor modifications in my time. I don't recall one taking more than ten minutes because they've been pretty obviously minor. Um, we're now well over an hour on this one.
An hour and twenty-five.
Yeah, I mean, I don't. I don't think it's minor. I mean, it was one of the key points to the historic commission. We already had their chair say he doesn't think it's minor. He happens to agree with it. Maybe they all will. Maybe they'll love it.
Although, although in fairness, um, to Mr. Richard spoke just as, as Clint Richards.
I know, just his, his own opinion, just himself. He liked the windows, but he thought it was a minor change. I mean, a major change. Anyway, I, I just, when we spend this much effort on something, I think it, it's not minor. That's my opinion.
Uh, okay. Uh, Mr. Bennet?
Well, certainly true that we are, that we have never, in my experience, I think, spent so much time on this request from my application. Uh, that kind of cuts both ways. Uh, on the one hand, it would suggest that this is not a modification. But on the other hand, we have dived so deeply into this at this point, I, I, I hasten or, or I'm reluctant necessarily exalt form over substance here because we've learned about anything and everything we need to know about this request. So, uh, what would be the, what would be the issues if we were to treat it as a minor modification? Well, one, uh, it would not go, public was not given comment or opportunity to comment on this. Is that correct, Andrew?
Correct, to an extent, yes.
Right, to an extent. It's on the agenda, but the butters were not given notice.
Butters weren't notified.
Right, right. But it was, it's been on the agenda. And two, uh, I suspect, uh, we would have received a formal uh, opinion, advisory opinion from the historical commission, which, in my view, I would assume that it would, uh, adhere to its original position. So.
Correct.
Uh, so, uh, and I look at the interests of the developer here. And those are interests that I think, uh, we should take into account when we try to make our decisions, and I think we do. Uh, and, and I'm reluctant to create a procedural barrier here when, when I don't need any shred of information beyond what I've heard to make a decision on a fundamental issue. So I would treat this as minor. It's unique, it's a one-off, but I'm prepared to, uh, deliberate on this as a minor modification.
Okay. Um, uh, Mr. Chen?
I agree. I would, I would also deliberate on the basis that it is a minor modification.
Okay, and this Pecknick?
Again, I think because the city has a separate set of guidelines for the preservation and replacement of the four, four windows, doesn't strike me as a minor modification. I'm happy to deliberate on it as well, and if other members feel that that's appropriate.
Well, um, it's, I asked this and I hate to put you on the spot because this is, you don't have to marry yourself to that, to any decision, but uh, from a standpoint of which direction we go, we're at a crossroads with respect to, if we, if four of us do not find that it's minor, then we, we ought not receive because we can't meet the, the minimum vote criteria of four votes in affirmative.
Yeah, no, I can't in good conscience say that I feel that it's minor.
Okay, so then it, it, I, I mean, I, I, I feel, I like this, I, I, I come down the line of Mr. Bennet and Mr. Chen, though, uh, because I feel like we've really unpacked quite a bit tonight, certainly in the hour and twenty-five. But I, I respect the fact that, that the numbers don't lie. Um, so in that, even if I were to align with it being minor, that would be, uh, three, which is one short of four. Um, so turning to Shanes, uh, it seems as though if we find that it's not minor, um, because there aren't enough votes to make that determination, um, the matter fails as a minor modification, it would have to be revived as a major modification, which is the same process with public mills. Do you want to be heard on any part of that before we, we go through the procedural steps? If, if, it falls short of the numbers, um, as I'm sure you can tell.
Well, I, I, again, um, I, I do agree with the members that have said, quite frankly, that the only difference, uh, between, uh, deliberating this tonight is minor modification and determining it to be what I call a major modification, needing us to essentially stop the process over. I, I don't believe the additional information that you're going to receive, um, is going to, I mean, the historic commission could come back and say, we would prefer to see the windows reproduced, but it's still not going to solve our problem. That in doing that, we're still going to have to replace one. And secondly, we're going to have to, you know, potentially lock the others down. And, and quite honestly, sir, that's just not a, a risk my client wants to take. And as an attorney, uh, someone who's going to be running an inn where they're going to be inviting people to stay, um, I, I wouldn't risk, um, the potential for a guest, if there's ever an injury, to find out that, you know, we could have very easily have made all the windows operationally, operational and, but failed to do it because, you know, we couldn't meet code or we, you know, we couldn't convince the historic commission that reproduction windows here, along with all the other, you know, the roof and everything else that we're doing to really try and preserve here was not acceptable. That, you know, it somehow, my client was put in a position of, you know, whether you want to call it paranoid or not, but risking life and limb so that these windows could be revert, uh, you know, restored and, and locked. I, I just, I, with all due respect, I, I don't see it. But of course, I do respect the board's consideration that if you want to make us go back as a major, you know, file as a major modification, we will certainly have to do that, but I, I still, a lot of time.
I, I, uh, I certainly, I respect that, uh, Attorney Shanes. Would you prefer the board take a vote, um, on the minor modification and, and, and allow that to be dispositive? And, and, and allow that to be dispositive, or do you wish to withdraw it, refile as a?
Kind of a good suggestion.
Yeah, sure.
It might be easier for you, rather than have us both knowing you have to start over.
Yeah.
Uh, if you simply delayed for a couple of weeks, go on and talk to the historic commission. You may find they all feel like the chair does, and they like your windows.
Yeah.
In which case it gets easy.
Yeah, I guess, I guess, yeah, because right now, I mean, part of the reason why they don't. That the preservation test, their first answer why they went to talk, not preservation, or, yeah, no, I know.
They're irrelevant.
So we could go, yeah, so we could go into, but one of the questions is, you know. I do have a code violation, so right now, if I build, you know, right now, I'm feeling frustrated because.
You have to do.
Well, I can't, if I build what we approved.
Starting over completely.
Yeah, so if I build what was approved right now, I won't get C M.
Yeah, all right.
So, I wonder if we could do like.
If I could, give me a moment, I want to hear from Attorney Shanes, I think that there's. I, I respect what you, what you're saying, but um, how do you wish to proceed?
Right, I, I, with respect.
Yeah.
Um, I think what is being suggested, and I think it is an excellent suggestion, and that would be that we would continue this hearing. Not have the board make a determination of major or minor. And we would voluntarily try and get in front of the historic commission as quickly as possible, so that they can provide you a comment. Uh, Mr. Swanton, if, if that were the case, would you feel? That like, if you had that commentary, good or bad or otherwise. That you would then be able to consider this a minor modification?
To address your, your, your question, um. Pretty much, yes, and then my, my issue is that it was central to their advice to us when we approved this last year. And, and now they're kind of cut out of the process, and I just, if you loop them back in, it would, I, I, you know.
And I, I respect that, I respect that, and I just, I, the only reason I asked the question, sir, was because. Again, if we continue on a month, we go see historic. And then they give you a comment, and, and then the board still decides, oh, this isn't minor. Then I got to start over a month from now, so with all due respect, if, if, I, I think, Mr. Chairman, we would like.
That's a fair, it's a fair question.
A continuance.
Yeah, one of the questions that I'm going to ask is, is it possible to at least take a minor for the sides? You know, is that something? Or not?
You, you already have that as.
Is that administrative on the side, so it broke it off separately? Okay, so, because we're trying to get in clothes for winter, and that's part of my.
Those, so that's a good, that's a good point, Mr. Gary, the.
It was the windows that was.
Those two issues have already been a, addressed administratively.
Okay.
By the planning, uh.
Okay.
And, and Mr. Ford.
Okay.
So with that, we're only talking about the windows, Mr. Shanes has made a request for continuance. On behalf of, on behalf of the applicant, uh, for time to refine their um, request for a minor modification and. And presumably buttress it with additional um, advisory commentary uh, from the historic commission. Or other materials that they may so wish, how, how much time would you like?
We're gonna, just a month, we'll, we'll, is there a historic meeting between now?
Before, um, the November ninth, the next meeting, um, and then go to the, uh, November fourteenth, CBA meeting.
Okay, the number fourteen, CBA, um.
That would, will I want to turn around to the chair, he's pretty good about it, uh, but.
Your confident the historic commission can see them before us.
Correct, yeah, correct, we would just want to make sure that they're reporting, which usually the chair is pretty good about it, and then.
Yeah, okay, um, fair enough, thank you, Attorney Shanes. Do we have a motion to continue the matter to November fourteenth, uh, for further. Some input by the applicant, thank you, Mr. Swanton, and seconded by Mr. Bennet, motion's made and seconded on the uh, motion to continue. Calling the role, Mr. Swanton.
Yes, Mr. Bennet.
Yes. Mr. Chen.
Yes.
Miss Peck.
Yes.
Rob Champetti, yes, that's five in the affirmative on the motion to continue, thank you very much.
Thank you for your time consideration.
I feel like this wasn't by any means squandered time, we, we, it's important for us.
Well, I think it's been an expectation for all of us.
It's, it's, um, it's a big, it's a big project, so we look forward to, uh, in two weeks, or sorry, one month.
All right.
Have a good day.
And, um, thank you again.
Yes. Um, okay, um, going into our public hearing, this is the matter of. Uh, fourteen Peyton Street, the application by John Patton and Julie Christie, Kara, Lisa Mead, V. Tallerman and Costa LLC. The matter is continued from our hearing date of September twenty-sixth, twenty twenty-three, this is a special permit for nonconformities. Um, the applicant seeks all necessary permits, permissions, and approvals for the renovation to a single-family house, including the removal. Of existing second-floor bay window, A, and existing second-floor bay window, and the addition of a second story to the west-side porch. Uh, and a second floor deck to the rear of the structure. Uh, yes.
This item, um, has a request for continuance to November twenty-eight.
November twenty-eight. Um, we have a motion to continue to November twenty-eighth, so thank you. Motion's made and seconded by Mr. Bennet, uh, motion taken by Mr. Swanton, uh, on the motion to continue to November twenty-eight. Uh, Mr. Swanton. Yes, Mr. Bennet.
Yes.
Mr. Chen.
Yes.
Miss Peck.
Yes.
Rob Champetti, yes, that's five in the affirmative, eyes have it, motion carries, matter is continued. And, so, I, I missed that, or else I'd have made that shorter. Um, we have a matter of Michael Burke, uh, sixteen Oakland Street. This is a special permit for nonconformities, the applicant seeks all necessary permits, permissions, and approvals to construct. A room at the back of an existing one-family, one single-family residence. Uh, extending a pre-existing non-conforming side yard setback, may we hear from the applicant? Good evening.
Good evening. Thank you, Bruce, and I have to say, five to quarters, I have to mark them.
Hello.
So, I have Charles Lieberman, who has helped develop the plans, who's going to help us with the project.
Very good, thank you, and, and I apologize, we're, um, we're, we're a distance away, if I could just ask you the. Can you, we're just trying to hear over the, uh, the air machine over here, if I can speak up just a bit, but, um, very nice to, to you folks, thank you for your patience. Uh, and, uh, we love a part of your presentation, you got the floor.
So this slide is our existing lot in yellow, sixteen Oakland Street. If you can see it on the, uh, south side, perhaps, um, going down the street, it. There's very little space between our neighbors, and that's the existing nonconformity. We did a renovation in two thousand and five, that extended that, and that's. On this slide, this shows proposed. Site plan, um, off the back of the house, you see the proposed addition. Uh, we can be removing that existing deck and just extending that and then enclosing it. Okay, you see the nonconforming on, on to the side. Now, this side. It goes to the end in yellow, back of the house. Yeah, we're based on the interior and west. Almost in the plan. So I would see the side. Then on the front, this is the. You know, they don't want it, yes.
Oh, I apologize, I'm sorry, I was just looking, I'm looking at my screen.
Okay.
Because I, it's hard for me to turn around and see that, I have it on my screen, um, was there anything else that you wanted to add?
I think so.
Very good, okay, thank you very much.
Small addition on the back.
Right.
Thank you, sir.
Okay.
Um, thank you very much for that presentation, we'll, uh, go ahead and close that portion of the public hearing, and go to any public comment, anyone who wishes to, uh, speak. Please raise your hand, we have, um, zero attendees online, so I'll look at the room. We chased them and scared them away with, uh, talking, talking all about windows.
Windows, right.
Were your structure having windows? Um, did you?
Be modern.
Yeah, so, uh, what did you, did you wish to add something?
Wanted to say that we have, um, three, perhaps four, let us support that were uploaded.
Yes, we have, we have those, and thank you, please, uh, that's always important for us to sort of get a sense of the butters, and then, thank you for providing those. Um, seeing no hands in the room, I will close the public comment section and go to questions from the board, Mr. Swanton.
Um, yeah, first I want to, uh. Uh, compliment you on, even though the drawings, uh, seem to be in drawn, they're, they're quite clear. And, uh, not everybody needs to hire lawyers and very expensive, um, people to, uh. Um, come for us, so I admire your courage.
Thank you. Um, now, if there's anything wrong with any of those folks. They have lawyers on both sides of me here, so I'm just saying it. Um, it does say that the siding is going to match the existing, and I think you show somewhere the existing is clapboards with four.
It is metal siding, yes, clapboard.
So clap, so that on this, on this new addition, there'll be clapboards where there aren't windows. Yeah, I have the check in there. No, I have no other questions, thank you. Very good, thank you, Mr. Bennet.
Uh, no questions, thank you, Mr. Chen.
Yeah, I guess in looking at the drawings, you have to draw some conclusions. Um, what's the building going to stand on?
That's going to be a four-foot foundation, it's going to be a four-foot, uh, foundation of the slab.
And, you know, based on the slope, it has to be a rubber roof.
Yes.
And it's three seasons, so it won't be heated?
It may, it may, it may be full season, may, may as well that fifteen minute.
All right, there's no other questions.
Very good, Miss Peck.
No questions.
And I do have no questions, I think the, the drawing's, um, clear and it's, uh, sharp, it gets, gets the message across, so thank you, uh, Chair, Mr. Swanton said. Um, we'll, uh, close the questions from the board section and go into deliberations, and again, we're deliberating the criteria for. A special permit for nonconformities, um, so, um, with that, we will, let's start with Mr. Swanton.
Well, the first criteria is, are there new nonconformities, uh, and I don't see any new nonconformities. It's not like you're getting closer to a lot line or creating a problem in some area. Um, the second criteria is, is it, um. More detrimental to the neighborhood than what's already there, and no, this is just in your backyard, you have a deck there, now you have a. Three or four-season room, that's kind of tucked in from both sides, so, and it's only one story, I don't see this as being, um. Uh, more detrimental to the neighborhood, so I can support this application.
Very good, Mr. Bennet.
Uh, I agree with, um, Swanton, he's, uh, if the issues.
Very good, Mr. Chen.
Yeah, I agree with, it seems only proper that we should beat this for at least an hour.
Yeah. Because you, you, you did scare us.
We did a window for an hour and a half.
Did you call him the lawyer? Did, did you good folks bring a window? Bring window for everybody, no, um, that's a good, that's good.
I can support the application.
Uh, Miss Peck.
Likewise.
Yeah, and I agree, I, thank you, Miss Peck, and I, I agree, um, I believe the, uh, the applicant's met the criteria, it's a. Modest, um, uh, modification, no, I'm sorry, modest addition, uh, and, um. They have support of the butters, and no one is voiced in the objection, that speaks volumes, as those most close. Proximity would have the most to say if they had something critical to say, and we don't see any of that, in fact, it's, it's open. Um, unless there's anything further, I'll close deliberations and entertain a motion of review.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the special permit for nonconformities for sixteen Oakland Street.
Thank you, Mr. Swanton. And I'll second that, Mr. Chen on the second, motion's made by Mr. Swanton on the motion to approve and seconded by Mr. Chen, calling the role, Mr. Swanton.
Yes.
Mr. Bennet.
Yes.
Mr. Chen.
Yes.
Miss Peck.
Yes.
Rob Champetti, I hope, yes, that's five in the affirmative, folks, the eyes have it, motion carries, and your application's approved, congratulations.
Well, thank you, folks, I would like to pay this.
I would like to thank, uh, Katie Sullivan.
I worked with her through this, and she was tremendous, so.
We're all, we're very lucky, all of us, to have that, that office and.
Next time, bring a window.
Hope it's done the next time.
And donuts.
Yeah.
Take care of it, so, okay, um, the, uh, last matter on our agenda this evening is the application of, uh, Zachary Gullup and Catherine DeFranz, uh. DeFranzo, my apologies, sir, if I mispronounced that, Kara, it's Lisa Mead, V. Tallerman and Costa LLC, this is the matter. Forty-nine Phillips Drive, it is a special permit to allow the use of an in-law apartment within the existing structure. May we hear from the applicant, counsel?
All right, good evening, Chair, and members of the board, as well, this is that, uh, my name is Ryan Clemens, from V. Tallerman and Costa, here tonight, on behalf of Zachary Gullup. Who's joining us, and Catherine DeFranzo, who, uh, just under a month ago welcomed their daughter, Vivian.
Oh, great.
Uh, which is partly why we are here tonight, uh, interconnected with that application, uh, date is September twenty-eighth, twenty twenty-three. For a special permit to use the existing in-law apartment at forty-nine Phillips Drive pursuant to section twelve A. Of Newbury Port zoning ordinance. So to orient ourselves, forty-nine Phillips is a single-family residence in the R-one zoning district. With pre-existing nonconformities of lot area, frontage, and front yard setback. The property conforms to all other dimensional controls and none are proposed to change. Uh, and in two thousand and four, this board issued a special permit to forty-nine Phillips prior owners to construct a new in-law apartment. And to conform with the ordinance, it was your construction at the time, the apartment was six hundred and seventy-two square feet. And contained two bedrooms, a kitchen, living room. And, uh, in the plan, we're about to see on the next slide, that area exclusive to the in-law was outlined in red. There was also a two hundred and thirty-four square foot green outlined area that was common to the apartment and to the house. Uh, which included laundry room, full bathroom, linen closet, and the stairs to the basement. The, uh, special permit expired a few years later, in two thousand and seven, as the prior owners, uh, never renewed the permit. So on the next slide, please, we'll, we can see the plot plan from the recent sales, we do an idea of the property and the layout. And on the slide after that is our, the, uh, floor plan from the two thousand and seven, uh. From the two thousand and four special permit showing the area exclusive to the in-law apartment outlined in red. And the area in common outlined in green, and again, that area in red is less than seven hundred square feet, since it was new construction at the time. Uh, and the area in green for two hundred and thirty-four. So, uh, that brings us to the present application on the, uh, next slide for a new special permit to use the, uh, in-law apartment now. Uh, since no, there's no new construction or additions proposed, the in-law apartment would now extend into the former common area, except for the stairs to the basement. Uh, as we're going to see in the new floor plans, uh, for a total of eight hundred and seventeen square feet, which is still, uh, under the applicable minimum. Of nine hundred, uh, and again, there's no change to, uh, footprint, or, uh. To either with, with the house's overall footprint. And so, uh, the applicant sees the special permit to use that new, uh, configuration, which on the next slide. We can see the, uh, in-law apartment expanding to over that, uh, two hundred square foot. Spaces to the side, again, minus the stairs, but still keeping the same layout, um, as before. So, this application, the apartment meets each of the ordinance's requirements, uh, as follows. Uh, requirement A, the relatives and residents requirement, uh, Catherine DeFranzo's parents will occupy the apartment to. Help take care of the newborn baby, and, uh, especially as both parents, uh, still, both applicants still need to commute to the city and. Have their own schedule, so it's demanding time for them. Uh, for requirement B, that dimensional requirement must be met. Uh, so the house, again, is pre-existing nonconforming, and had already received a permit in two thousand and four with these, uh, dimensions, and again. No controls proposed to change. For, uh, requirement C, floor area requirement, the, uh, nine hundred foot maximum, except for new construction, which is counted as seven hundred. The, uh, apartment was duly constructed in two thousand and seven, and complied then, as it, there's no new construction now or addition. Uh, the nine hundred square foot maximum applies, and the, uh, total apartment, as laid out in the floor plan, is at eight hundred and seventeen square feet. Well, within that maximum. For requirement D, uh, that the, uh, board may impose reasonable restrictions, including. For requirement D, uh, that the uh, board may impose reasonable restrictions, including uh, an extra parking space per the minimum required. Uh, the property meets that as well. There are three parking spaces on site and there will continue to uh, be three parking spaces there. Requirement E, safety, health and building codes, all of those will be met. Requirement F, uh, that this decision should be granted to be reported. Yes, we will report the decision granted. Requirement G, recertification, the applicant's free to recertify uh, as applicable. Uh, requirement H, the expiration terms, the applicant's agreed to that as well. Requirement I, removing the kitchen and bottom lap and permit, applicant's agree to that. And requirement J, inspection of panos, applicant's agree to that finally as well. So. To summarize, the applicant hereby requests the board to approve the new special permit to use the in, the existing in-law apartment at Forty-Nine Phillips Drive. As all requirements of section twelve A will be met or all are already met and um. The board should have also received the letters of non-opposition from the uh, next door neighbors to Forty-Nine Phillips. So, thank you for your consideration. I look forward to any questions you may now.
Thank you, counsel. Um. We will uh, close the presentation portion of the public hearing and go to this vast. Sea of eager folks to participate in any public comments, seeing no hands, um. Uh, we will close that portion of the public comment. There are no hands, no attendees online, so. Uh, we close the public comment and go to questions from the board. Mr. Swanton, any questions?
I have no questions.
Thank you, Mr. Bennet.
No questions.
Mr. Chen?
Uh, just a point of clarity. So there is an existing in-law apartment there. This is actually going to be reconfigured? Is there construction required to make the reconfiguration?
There's no construction required. Uh, the plans had considered moving a door from the wall, but now that the applicants have moved in, um. They seem fine with it.
Okay, so it is as it is.
As is.
Okay, thank you. No other questions?
No, congratulations on maybe having the in-laws there to.
Yeah, that's good.
Yeah, for sure. Um, and Miss Pecking, anything?
No questions.
Great. I don't have any questions either, so we'll close the questions from the board and go into deliberations, starting with uh, Mr. Swanton. Um, yeah, I mean, I I can support this because uh, well, the neighbor supported, but it also, it seems to tick all the boxes. I mean, it's a blood relative, it's your parents. They'll be very helpful with this newborn, I'm sure. Um, it needs the natural requirements, it needs the parking. And negative traffic. I don't see it impairing the neighborhood, so I can support this, uh. Very good. Mr. Bennet?
I agree. Both the requirements are special permit, in-law special permit, so. Special permit for nonconformity.
Mr. Chen?
Uh, I can also support it. Uh, do you want us to review the nine prongs?
Um, if you uh, if you know them and want to, and want to shout them out, we'll, we'll hear you.
There's no way to take them up en masse?
You can, you can say that you feel that the pro, that that the criteria.
I think the criteria have been met, including the nine prongs under section ten H seven of the. The reward zoning ordinance, and therefore I can support the uh, the application.
Very good. Uh, and Miss Pecking?
Yes, I support it as well.
Uh, I too find that the applicant has set the criteria. Congratulations as well, and uh. I I do, you know, I feel it's a very ordinary and modest request. I, I mean, I can support it. Um, A, seeing no further deliberations, I'll close that final portion and entertain a motion to approve. The uh, special permit to allow the use of an in-law apartment within the existing structure at Forty-Nine Phillips Drive. So moved. Thank you, Mr. Swanton. I will second Bennet in the second. Motion's made and seconded. Motion made by Mr. Swanton, seconded by Mr. Bennet, calling the role, Mr. Swanton. Yes, Mr. Bennet.
Yes.
Mr. Chan.
Yes.
Miss Pecking.
Yes.
And Rob Champetti, yes, that's five in the affirmative. Eyes have it. Motion carries. Thank you very much for your patience as well.
Absolutely.
And good luck.
Very nice.
You too.
Thank you.
Alright, um, concluding the business of the uh, Newbury Port zoning board and Gail's public hearings, I'll close that section and. Um, what we have before us is our business meeting, uh, which is a continuation. We have before us the approval of minutes from ten-ten, twenty twenty-three by. The lovely and talented Discretion Joy, who suffers through. Do we have any changes, modifications? We have motion.
No minor modification either to the minutes.
I think windows. No one will ever bring a window to this meeting again. Yeah, we should, we should have like a, like a. Answer of the door. I keep the window, I was, I was like, you know, checking, do you have any bags? Um, is that siding? You're going to have to leave that there. Okay, um, any, we have motion to approve minutes?
I'll move.
Thank you. Uh, I'll second that. Thank you. Motion's made, seconded. This is voice vote. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Can you oppose? No moves. The eyes have it. Motion carries. Thank you, Chris. Both uh, minutes are approved. Uh, I have no other comments, and I believe neither does Mr. Ford. No, you.
No, short form, I do, the next city council meeting, maybe, maybe not. When, uh, when is that?
Uh, the thirteenth, uh, there may or may or may not be, they may remove down regulation, which may or may not, instead of more special permits.
I uh, and if, if there isn't. It will die on the vine. Does this dying committee, that we're going to wreck, but they would have to get a new proposal. So is that, is it that in towards that?
I would move after uh, two and a half minutes for your process.
To work on the street.
I have some regulation to be given, despite debates above the spectrum.
Well, um. I'm going to, I, I shared this with Mr. Swanton. I'm not sure if everyone's aware, but I have the privilege of teaching a zoning class. That uh, that I, at the digital suffered indignity and to get the privilege of having written, but. I'm writing a module on the short-term revenue and you're all invited to audit my course.
Oh, yay, okay.
And and you'll all be called on, I assure you. No, but it's uh, it's remarkable that we, as city, have been waiting for. I've not waited, but not waiting. That's if you ask like someone's been to that. They have been working in a, trying to find. I gotta believe it's, it's a better product than the end product. There's a product, yes, right, but um. We'll see. Um, thanks for everything. Uh, motion to adjourn?
Yes.
So moved.
Motion to adjourn. Alright, all those in favor, eyes, thank you. Thanks, guys.